A one meeting of the select board. This evening, we have a modest agenda. And as always during these times, we will begin with an update from our fire chief and emergency management director, Mike Cassidy, to provide us a coronavirus community update. Good evening, Chief. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Very well, thank you. In terms of our update, next slide, please. Next slide. Excellent, thank you. So, one of the good things that we're seeing is we're trending down in terms of our numbers. Last year, not last year, sorry, last week, the slide indicated that there had been forty-seven new cases in the intervening week. This week, it's only twenty-seven new cases. So, we are very encouraged that the numbers are starting to trend in downward direction. We do currently have one hundred and ninety-nine active cases. And when you look at the list, you see that the majority of new cases are either single cases at single-family homes or clusters at single-family homes. So, although we do have one cluster at the elderly housing complex and one cluster at the long-term care facility, the majority of cases in Holliston right now are at single-family homes. As you look at our data from the beginning of when we first started tracking this back last March, you'll see that we have had several large spikes. And then we have several other times, and I know Ms. Hine had asked me about this a few weeks ago, we've also had some days like January fourth where, based on the information from our public health nurse consultant, we took seventy-one cases off of our active list at that time. We are very hopeful that that will happen soon because as you look at our one hundred and ninety-nine active cases, only seventy-four of them are in the last two weeks, which means that one hundred and twenty-five cases or five-eighths of our active cases are more than two weeks old. So, as public health starts to catch up with all the cases that they started tracking around the holidays and just after the holidays, we are hopeful that they will soon remove a significant number of active cases from our active list. Next slide, please. At the suggestion of Mr. Sparrow, I have added an additional component to our percent positivity graph. Not only are we comparing Holliston's positivity, which is the blue line, sorry, the orange line, to the state's positivity, which is the blue line, but we've added in on the second axis, the total number of tests administered to Holliston residents because of the question was, what is the correlation between our positivity rate and the number of tests administered? And you will see a couple instances such as September sixteenth, December sixteenth, and last week, the July twenty-first date, that when we had a significant increase in the number of tests administered, we did see a corresponding decrease in our positivity. Okay, and if you look at the map, you will see the majority of the towns around us are red. There are two continuous communities right now who are in the yellow. Last week, our positivity rate was five-point-two-one. So, if we continue to trend down in the direction that we have been trending, it's possible that within this week or next week, we may be able to once again achieve yellow community status. Next slide, please. We had mentioned last week that we weren't sure whether or not the governor was going to be extending the temporary emergency measures, many of which had been put in place effective November sixth. And he extended some, and he let others lapse at five o'clock this morning. So, the stay-at-home advisory that was in effect from ten o'clock at night expired at five this morning. And however, the twenty-five capacity, twenty-five percent capacity limit for certain sectors remain in effect until February eighth. Next slide, please. This is a new graphic. This was just updated within the last hour or so. It was announced today that individuals seventy-five and older would be able to start receiving the vaccine as early as February first. As of Wednesday of this week, individuals who are in phase two will be able to sign up to receive their first dose of the vaccine. And again, individuals sixty-five-plus and individuals with two or more comorbidities will be close behind in early February. And then educators and individuals in several other sectors, including public health workers and works in public health, will be later on mid to late February. But it was very encouraging to hear that as of February first, that individuals seventy-five and older would be able to... Next slide. And so, this is a slide that we had last week, which showed that the first four parts of phase one were eligible. But if we go to the next slide, as of Thursday of last week, they had flattened phase one, and all six groups within, subgroups within phase one are now eligible. So, in addition to the first responders and the congregate care settings, which had been added in the last couple of weeks, home-based healthcare workers and other non-COVID-facing healthcare workers are now eligible to get the vaccine, which is why, as we're finishing up phase one, they're anticipating starting phase two as early as next week. This is all dependent on the state receiving consistent allotments from the federal government. Right now, they're receiving about eighty-nine thousand vaccines a week, and they have a plan to distribute those based on what locations that are doing immunizations have already administered, how many they have on hand, and how many they have scheduled out in the next ten days. Next slide. And there was a question last week with regards to the UK strain and whether or not the vaccine was believed to be effective. Moderna, which is one of the two vaccine manufacturers who have received the emergency use authorization, that based on their research, that their vaccine is effective against both the UK and the South African strain. The UK strain is B one dot one dot seven, and the South African strain is B one dot three-five-one. They also announced that they are in some preclinical studies of a vaccine booster, which is expected to ensure that it is effective against some of these newer strains. And we are also very closely watching a new strain, which was identified in California, that's B one dot four-two-six, which unfortunately, based on what they're seeing, it's possible that that strain may undermine the effectiveness of the existing vaccines and antibody-based treatments that are on the market right now. So, we are watching very closely what's coming, not only from overseas, but also what's already here in the United States and out on the West Coast. And with that, next slide, I will take questions.
Thank you, Mike. We'll start with Beth Sparrow.
We tend to ask lots of questions. The only comment I'm going to have tonight is just, thank you for adding the number of tests that we're administering on a weekly basis. I appreciate you adding that particular piece of data. I think it's salient to understand the percent positivity rate as it relates to how many tests we're going on a weekly basis. So, I'm sure my colleagues will have some more questions, but at this point, I'm good. So, thank you, thank you, Chief.
It was an excellent suggestion. I was glad to incorporate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chief. Not to be a forensic detective here, but it sure looked like on that graph that some of the spikes in the testing seemed to coincide with college students, at least my three college students returning back to campuses. Is it still the practice that if you are a college student who lives in Massachusetts, you get tested elsewhere, your test results show up in the state of your primary residence?
If that primary residence is linked to your healthcare record, if they have changed their mailing address to their college location, which many of them did for voting purposes, and it was also tied to their health record, then it would be going to where they are at school. But yes, for the majority of college students, when they take the test, the healthcare record associates their home address with currently.
Okay. And there's no, it seems to me that most colleges now are, the students are staying through a spring break, that they're not scheduling a spring break. Is that your understanding as well?
There are some, a lot of higher education locations are choosing that model. That is correct. I do know some that have recently gone back to campus, but they tend to be some smaller schools and not the larger ones.
And then last question. Remind me again what yellow being, a yellow, having a yellow status in terms of positivity rate, what that signals. I remember back in November, I think it was, when the governor was looking at advancing the phases for the reopening plan, that it mattered a bit at that time, that you didn't advance through the next phase of reopening if you were a red community. I was thinking it through earlier today. That's not relevant today, this moment, because we're not advancing the reopening plan. So, okay, so what would the yellow status signal for the town of Holliston at this point? Would we feel or see a change with one or two weeks of being yellow?
So, it could help in terms of the risk perception of other school districts when considering whether or not to engage in interscholastic activities with our student athletes. I know each school district has the opportunity to make a risk determination. The TVL has broken up the schools into smaller pods to try and limit interaction. But at the same time, each school has the ability to look at who their potential opponent is and look at their metrics and determine whether or not it's appropriate for their students to be in closer contact with those students who are outside of their normal bubble.
Okay, so where Holliston's been in the red, have we not had any games played as a result?
We had a late start to our winter season, and we have just gotten through our practices, and we've started our games. So, we really haven't had a large number of cases where an individual school district could have decided to not send their students. And again, if you look at the map, you see most of the communities around us are red as well. So, it's hard for them to cry foul, but it's this huge risk for them to send their students to our community if they're also a red community. I think, I think at the end of the day, us going back to yellow, which would be based on a percent positivity below five percent, and we were close last week, we had dropped down to five-point-two-one. I think what that really signals for us is that the surge is abating and that people are doing their part to help limit the spread of the disease in the community.
Well, I feel like that the discussions we have with you at our table here, the focus has almost entirely been on, a couple of areas, but one of them, the big one, being the schools. And so, yet another call-out to the community to be vigilant with hand washing, social distancing, following restrictions, wearing your face masks, in order to not only keep our children in school, but also to allow them to participate in their school-sponsored sports.
Yes.
If we move into the yellow, this is a good thing.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, just a question relative to the new strains that you talked about moments ago on that slide. These strains are reportedly, they transmit with more ease and infectiveness. Can you tell us if the Department of Public Health or any public health organization will be tracking this such that if it lands in Holliston, we will know about it? And if it does, from where you sit, does it change anything that we're doing right now, either as a community and/or does it impact the schools?
That's an excellent question. So, the State Department of Public Health is doing active surveillance, and they have only identified a few cases of the UK variant, the B dot one dot one dot seven. And they have previously identified where that, those individuals that tested with that strain have been. It is anticipated that that UK variant could become the dominant strain by March in the Commonwealth. If that's the case, I don't expect that they're going to be calling out individual cases within the Maven system. I think they're just going to be notifying, you know, a whole bunch of communities that you have joined the ranks of the other communities that now have the easier-spreading strain in your community. I think what may end up happening, and I've seen some discussions and some circles in the last couple of days, is questioning face coverings and the types of face coverings that are recommended, whether or not doubling up on face coverings is recommended, to wear both a procedure mask as well as a KN-95 mask. And so, that certainly could end up impacting schools as well as other sectors of our community.
Thank you, Mike. At this point, I'll welcome any questions from the public Zoom call, if there are Linda Marshall, we have a question from you. Good evening. How are you?
I'm doing well. Good evening. I actually have two questions, again, on behalf of our senior population. As soon as the announcement was made today about the seventy-five and older, we began receiving phone calls. So, two questions. One, I know there will be more sites opening up in the near future. Do we have any idea if there will be any in a closer location than the ones that are currently open to the public? And secondly, is there a way for folks to register to receive a vaccine not online? Many of our seniors don't have the ability or capability to register online. Any ideas on that, Mike?
Excellent. Both questions are very timely. There are multiple sites which are being stood up in anticipation of phase two. Many of those are through partnerships with both healthcare centers as well as pharmacies. And so, we may see a pharmacy location closer than the mass vaccination sites at Fenway and Gillette, which I know are very ominous for some of your target population with regards to the ability to set up an appointment not online. And I am extremely sensitive to the technological challenges. I know even some people younger who have been challenged trying to set up appointments through the various websites. There is no alternative right now. So, this might be a case of, we may need to try and work some volunteers so that if you've got a specific member of your clientele who wants to get an appointment, it might be a case of you've got somebody on the phone with them from the senior center who is accessing the website on their behalf to make those appointments for them. But there isn't the ability to call an eight-hundred number and bypass the registration system at any of these sites. The only way, and this will be long beyond February, where they would likely be able to make an appointment using the phone, would be when the point, at the point where the vaccine has been so widely distributed that it's available at their primary care physician's office, and they can call and make an appointment that way. But in this initial phase-one, phase-two rollout, it's all online because that's the only way that these sites are able to enter the information into the MIIS state system so that they can track how many doses have been administered, how many are still pending administration, is their web portals link and automatically roll up that data to the MIIS system.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Cassidy regarding the coronavirus community update? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, Mike, we'll move on to the CARES Act programmatic update.
Great. No requests for you this evening, having come from any boards or committees. But I would like to point out that the town administrator is bringing together a working group of folks from both the municipal and school sides to chat about our current balances in the CARES Act funds that were received last spring and summer so that we can reconcile and we can both report to, in our case, on the municipal side, the administration and finance, and on the school side, they can report to DESI and make sure that we know who is claiming which expenses using which CARES Act funds. And that, that meeting is being scheduled by the town administrator, and I appreciate him bringing all the parties together so that we can make sure that we have a true and accurate picture of exactly how much is left to spend for CARES Act and COVID-related expenses.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions on that? Nope. Tina?
I do not have any. No.
I just wanted to emphasize again, Mike, as you pointed out, that yes, we are meeting with the schools. We appreciate their willingness to come in and talk. I think this will be the third meeting we've had with schools under CARES Act, where the superintendent, the business manager, and myself and you have kind of collaborated with the chief about the CARES Act. It's a good catch-up meeting. We haven't talked to them in a couple of months. So, I believe that's scheduled for Thursday morning at seven-thirty. Got that right? Yeah, great. We look forward to seeing them and learning more about the CARES Act situation at the schools. Any questions on the CARES Act programmatic update from Chief Cassidy from those attending on the Zoom? Seeing none, we will move on. Warrants. Sparrow.
All right. So, we have one warrant. I will make a motion to approve a warrant in the amount of four-hundred-and-forty-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Of that, one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-five-hundred-and-six dollars is town payroll.
Second, then?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Moving on to public comments. Mr. Sparrow.
I do not have anything at this time.
Move on.
I do not have any public comment. No.
Let's get a couple of items. First, I believe on behalf of the town, I'd like to extend our appreciation to both Senators Spilker and Rep. Dykman, who publicly announced this week that the legislature has authorized a few capital items that will benefit our town. That includes fifty thousand dollars for local economic development, one-point-five-million for downtown traffic improvements, and a half-a-million dollars for pedestrian safety and mobility improvements. These items are all capital authorization over the next five to ten years. We're going to be working with our legislature, the governor's office, to try and get these funds released, once we provide shovel-ready projects that they can help offset. It's, looking at these items, I can immediately tell you we'll find some great use for them down the road. I was thrilled when I saw it came out, and I think on behalf of the town, we should express our thanks to both Senators Spilker and Representative Dykman. That is all. I was going to mention the schools meeting, so that is all I have. Public comment, anybody on the Zoom call at this point have any public comments they wish to bring forth?
You're on a cell phone.
Yep, on a cell phone, hit star six. On a cell phone, press star six. You good, Chris? We have a, we have a, we have somebody?
Yes, may I speak now?
Yes, who's calling, please?
Ken Hyde from two-eighty Washington Street.
Good evening, Mr. Hyde. How are you? What can we do for you?
I am fine. Look, I had a problem with my yard. I had the neighbor at two-eighty-six Washington Street, right? He's next to me. And what he's doing, right, he's emptying his sun pump, right, in my yard, right? He actually built a sewer system and greeted the land towards me before the land was just flat, right? I complained to the Conservation Commission, and they did nothing. I called the town manager, right, explained to him my problem. He did not answer my call, okay? And I'm very annoyed about it.
Could I ask?
And what this guy is doing now, he's throwing branches in my yard because he knew I reported him to the town, and I want to stop.
I understand. Can I ask you, what's the timeframe of this activity? If you could help us frame what time period you're looking at? Is this over the past few months, the past few years? What are you talking about?
Look, I, you know, I went to the zoning commission meeting, right? And I told them that I wouldn't object if they handled this water problem. They allowed the guy, right, to add the addition. They also allowed him, right, to build this, a new sewer system, right, right? And they did nothing about my problem. And I'm very annoyed about it.
I understand. But can I ask you again, how long ago was this action?
Look, this is a few years, and the guy...
This has been going on for a while, then? Okay, I got you.
Right, right. And I certainly like you, right, to give this your full attention for me, please.
You have it.
Okay, okay. And I also think, because the guy's brother used to work for the town, I also think that there may be, there may be corruption involved, okay? So, could you look into that for me, please?
Well, I think we're going to have to have some details at this point. Could you hold on one second because we're now going to ask our town administrator to help fill in a little bit of what may have been done to date? So, if you can hold on one second, I'm going to get a report from Travis. Stand by, Mr. Hyde. Travis, if you can give us a quick update on Mr. Hyde's question.
Sure. So, we did have the former building inspector, Chris Canny, had gone out to look at this, worked with Mr. Hyde. Most recently, the conservation agent did go out to take a look at it. Both of those individuals determined that there was nothing that the town could do in this instance. And we, you know, a few calls have come into the town administrator's office, and we've tried to point Mr. Hyde in the direction of this.
Look, look, I think the problem is not that the town can't do anything about it. The main problem is the town is unwilling to address the problem. Because this problem was mentioned at the zoning commission meeting for this guy's addition. And I told them about it, so they were aware of it. They choose to ignore my complaint and allow the addition, right? And basically, what this guy has done, he's extended the hose through the, you know, in the exhaust of the sun pump, right? And the sun pump is discharging in my backyard, creating, creating a swamp in the backyard. It's creating a water problem.
Mr. Hyde, hold on one second. That sounds like a very annoying problem. So, if you'll allow us, I think Mr. Ahern was finishing up his comments. Okay, so stand by. Travis, you were, you were going to add.
So, with the, the two individuals who went out there, obviously, the, what Mr. Hyde just described with the hose being on its property and those things were not observed? I think Mr. Hyde...
Yes, it was observed. I spoke to him. I spoke to the Conservation Commission. I did speak to him.
When he came out for his site visit, you spoke to him?
And he told me, he can't do anything about it. It was not like, like this before.
I understand. Okay, hold on one second.
Yes, I, look, look, I lived at my residence for over thirty years, and the ground was flat, right? What the zoning commission did was they allowed this, this neighbor to rebuild his sewer and greeted the land towards my property. And what this guy did, he extended a hose from the sun pump exhaust, right, to the greatest portion of the land, and which made the water flow into my backyard, and I want to stop.
All right. We hear you, Mr. Hyde. If you could just hold on one second, this is the third time I've just asked you to hold your comments. I just want to hear the rest of the story from the town administrator. Do you understand? Do you understand?
Well, look, yes.
No, please, I'm asking you to hold your comments, okay? We heard your side.
Okay. Okay, I'll hold. But what I'm trying to warn you, what I'm trying to warn you about is I spoke to the town manager about this problem, and he refused to call me back.
Well, we're hearing a report from him right now, and I can't allow too many more interruptions.
Okay, 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 I understand.
Thank you. Go ahead, Travis. Wrap up, please.
So, obviously, I followed up with the building, the former building inspector, the current conservation agent. I returned multiple calls to Mr. Hyde.
You didn't return my calls. Please.
Put you on mute in a minute if you don't stop interrupting. This is the last one.
All right, all right, I'm sorry. I'm just annoyed. That's all.
No, look, I get you're upset. That's okay. We're here to listen. But it involves two ways, okay? So just-
Okay, okay, I understand. I understand.
Go ahead, Travis. I'm sorry. So both times that I spoke with Mr. Hyde after following up with our two staff members who had seen the site in person was to essentially inform him that both of those individuals, through their official duties, did not see any course of action for them to take officially, and that both of them felt that this was going to be a civil matter. We, as my office, not just myself, but the two people who have received multiple calls from Mr. Hyde, have expressed that to him. I think at this time, if the select board would like, I could ask, you know, for sort of in writing from the conservation agent on his feelings of the matter, so you can review that, if that would be of interest to the board. But at this time, both of them, upon review, felt that there was nothing that they could do in an official capacity, and that it was a civil matter. Any questions on that, Mrs. Sparrow?
No, I think it makes sense, and I probably would like to see it in writing.
Tina, any thoughts on this?
My only comment would be that I can see that in October of 2014, Mr. Hyde did go to the zoning board of appeals and make the comments he's sharing with us tonight. And I can see that they then closed the public hearing. The only thing I would add, because I recognize Mr. Hyde is frustrated, and it sure looks like it's been many years of this frustration, is if this could be reviewed, this decision back in ZBAs, someone could take a look, set up, put a set of eyes on it. Again, I can see Mr. Hyde's comments here, and I do not know how they were incorporated into the decision that was made, and that may be worth review. Because what I'm not hearing Mr. Hyde say is that he was denied an opportunity to express his, he attended the hearing, his comments were made and were incorporated into the meeting minutes, and I can only assume they were factored into the decision that was made. It does not sound like Mr. Hyde is presenting new information since 2014. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hyde, but it sounds like this-
No, no, you're right. You're right.
Okay. So I think that this is a bit of a historical review to go back and understand how, you know, maybe today's, I'm not sure who would do that work, but have somebody review the decision that was made. It looks like, Mr. Hyde, it was October fifteenth, 2014. Maybe have someone review that decision.
So, Mr. Hyde, a little bit of feedback from our select board. Again, thank you for your patience. I understand you're frustrated. That's why you come here to public comment. We're going to try to work with you. It would take me-
Yes, and I want to add, right, right, in addition to the addition he made to his property, he went and installed a new sewer system and greeted the land towards my property. So when the discharge from the sun pump, right, flows, right, it flows into my land, and it's very frustrating.
Understood. So what I think what we're going to do is have our town administrator follow off with the other land agency or land use boards, including the conservation, possibly the zoning board, to find out if there's any kind of written response that they can provide you to explain what their judgment is. It sounds like that has not happened. I think it's important for you to hear that, have that information, and as Mr. Ahern indicated, if there's nothing that ultimately can be done, you can at least take that judgment and proceed on a civil case through some other legal remedy. But for sure, let's try to get some answers from these boards first in writing so that you have something to act upon. Does that sound like a plan?
Yes, yes, I agree.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming in.
And thank you, too.
All right. Have a great night. Thank you, sir. Any other comments this evening for public comment? Hearing none. We will move on. A little late to our seven o'clock water rate hearing, but that'll late than never. I will ask Mr. Sparrow to introduce the water rate hearing.
Um, okay.
Well, we talked earlier. There was some refurbishment that Travis might be able to read into the record.
Um.
Or you can just make a motion, don't you?
Yeah.
Whatever Clark feels.
Let me, I will make a motion to open the water rate hearing for the FY22, which includes the FY22 budget review for the water department.
Sounds good. Do you have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. A water rate hearing is now open. I observe Mr. Reese is with us this evening. Oh, are you Sean?
Good, good. Thank you.
All right. Travis, do you want to start with Sean, or do you have some introductory remarks to make?
Sure. I think however Sean would like to do it, if we want the 22 budget obviously impacted, but then obviously, we're also looking to, the select board is responsible through the act that Ben has over there to set the water rate for the, on a fiscal, on a annual basis. So would you like to do the budget first, Sean?
Why don't we do the water rate, if you don't mind?
Okay.
All right. Do we have some slides to pull up with this, Sean?
I do not. I don't know. I don't think we have any slides.
I can pull up the report, or we can just sort of cover the highlights that you like to go through.
All right. All right. Do you want me to go through it? I'm not sure. Do you want me to go through any of the report, or basically the recommendation? I mean, I just have the recommendation, but Travis can speak to certainly the finer details of it, but the recommendation is no movement or no increase of the rates for fiscal year 22 based on, based on the debt that we're incurring, the maturing debt, and, you know, our revenue, retained earnings. So right now, that doesn't, and what we'll do, I think the consensus is to, basically, every year examine these retained earnings to supplement or kind of soften any need to, or any movement to the rates.
Yeah.
And I can't really see the screen, what you're looking at, but, I mean, Travis can certainly speak to in great detail.
Yeah, let me just, I'll just hop into a couple of things that Sean and Ben and I discussed going into this. One is that the, this STANTEC study, there's a couple tweaks that we were going back and forth on with them. It's really just making sure that when we leave this process and we have a final document to put up on the website, that it has everything, including the FY22 budget, which we'll talk about shortly. But the major points are, last year, this board approved the three percent reduction of the rate, and that this is based on, this is essentially a plan to keep rates steady without significant increases or any increases through FY25. We can discuss how that's possible, but the one, a couple of things I would point out is that the debt service on the water treatment plant, and Sean can explain the timeline on that with the bid documents and where we are with it, but essentially, that information is included in here and factored in. And I'm just going to go to, sorry, I'm just going to, so that I can see it on my own. So if we look at, a lot of charts. Yeah. We have, so I'm going to go to Schedule Four. Schedule Four is essentially the budget that then looks out over until FY, excuse me, FY30. So included in here, and this is the change that I asked for, we know that this FY20 budget, which we'll discuss shortly, just needs to be updated. It does not impact what we're going to talk about here when it comes to rate setting. And then on the second page of Schedule Four, it also has this debt projection based on the water treatment plant. We know now that the most expeditious way to approach the water treatment plant is not going to be through the use of the SRF. The SRF provided priority to projects that had to do with PFAS, which is a growing issue in the Commonwealth and the country, and one that is not our primary concern with our treatment plant, and therefore impacted the grade most likely. Sean talked to them on Friday. Most likely, by June, we would hear if other projects drop out, that we would be in the SRF, but we really don't want to wait that long. We have a timeline on this project. So what the STANTEC group did-
Just real briefly, you're throwing the SRF acronym out. That's a state revolving fund that basically provides low-interest loans to such public projects. Is that correct?
It does. It also has an onerous sort of reporting mechanism within it that makes us have to put that in our bid documents. And therefore, you know, if we were going to put out bid documents that we intended to use the SRF, we would need to indicate that, and therefore, we'd have to wait until June if we felt like that was the only course of action.
One would imagine when interest rates are higher, this option would probably be more attractive.
Right. In the current market environment, the benefit over time is really just not going to be felt, and therefore, I have no issue, you know, sort of recommending that we go with market. The impact would be, you know, some, the SRF will allow you to, and there is wisdom in doing it, but there's also pros and cons, essentially set a level debt amount. Think of your mortgage, right, where your principal and interest sort of go up and down conversely, so that you have a level payment over time for thirty years, for example. The SRF does that with their debt, so they have what's considered a level payment, whereas the normal borrowing that we would have in the town would be level principal, whereas as we pay off the principal, the debt payments go down over time, which allows us in the future to then have that debt decline and plan future projects. So that's what they built in since Friday. So the only thing that we ask for is they just update FY22, and then just factor in the short-term interest that we have in 22, and then this will be a complete document. We'll put this up on the website. And I would just say, you know, I think, I talked with Sean and Ben about it on Friday. I think it's an excellent tool. I think it's going to help us be able to plan water rates into the future. And again, you know, it indicates that we are able to have a flat rate in FY22. It does model in 23 with the first year of debt, of full-time debt service on the water treatment plant, that we may need to use water retained earnings to sort of level off the peak of that debt service. But again, that's why we have that there. It's a tool that we use to stabilize rates, among other things. Sorry, Sean, I just went very long into debt.
Let me give Ben a chance to weigh in. I think he has some remarks to make.
Yeah, I had a couple of comments to make. Yeah, I met with Sean and Travis about this, and just, you know, I think it's good if we can keep the rates as they are at this moment. But I think what we need to do is, I think we need to have a deeper discussion than we're going to be able to have tonight. And what I'm, I would actually propose that we try to do something in the summer. And the reason I think we need to do some deeper dives into the water department, first of all, we're going to have the results of the STANTEC studies that we just approved at the Summertown meeting early summer, and it'd be good to be able to incorporate these into a particular conversation. But I think we need to have, I think we need to talk about a few different things at some point in the future, because this water is a sort of, it presents a unique problem because, not a problem, but it's a challenge and is a resource because it's a finite resource. We want to protect that resource, and as a result, as people use less water, our rates go up, which therefore can often create negative pressure on people to, on their usage. So that results in increased costs because the rates have to go up because the fixed costs are not. And I think we need to do a deeper dive in terms of, in terms of this department to start looking at things like, how do we keep financial viability for years to come? How do we have, be developing a longer-term capital plan and thinking about conservation? And how do the rates factor into that? And I think for the purposes of this conversation, I think we just, we keep them level for FY22, but we need to start thinking about longer term, what are our plans, financial and in terms of which projects are the ones that we need to attend to, because I think it's important that we start to think about those things so that the resource is available and affordable for years to come. So those are my, those are my comments. And so I, you know, I would certainly entertain and put together the effort to really put some of this, more details into this in the coming weeks, but I think it's something that we should be thinking about during the summer.
Thanks, Ben. Tina, any comments?
Well, so I wasn't sure if Sean or Travis were going to present anymore or discuss anymore. I didn't want to cut you off if you had more that you wanted to say about-
I just have a few, I just have a few comments for you. So obviously, it's been an unusual year with the COVID, so we've had more people at home. So the demand was a little bit higher throughout the year of 2020, so it's not, I'm not speaking exactly the fiscal year, but we've had more pumpage throughout the year. And our revenue actually just increased per quarter, went up, quarter one went up about eleven thousand, quarter two it went up, so which is this past September to December, about eighty-eight thousand dollars, even though we had a rate reduction. So you can see, we just have more people at home, there's more demand on the system. So we actually generated a little bit more revenue. On a separate note, I know that Ms. Ahern had wanted to discuss possible, you know, changes to the tier structure, and certainly, you know, I'm open to do that. And this, the STANTEC study offers us the modeling to do that. If it's something that you want to do, you know, implement like in the summer, or just investigate a little bit further, we have the modeling now to be able to do that, and its impact on the users, whether residential or commercial properties. So just, we can have, we can run some scenarios for you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Do you want to add?
No, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I definitely have a couple of comments. So, you know, it's not so much that it's a goal to change the four-tiered structure and to change the exemptions that we have in place, the caps that we have in place. I think the starting point is to understand the goals of having the four-tiered structures. So this study did a great job at making sure that we are able to recover the full cost for our service. So, you know, gold star for that. It also provided some benchmarks for other communities like Holliston to kind of put us in comparison to these communities. And when I looked at the details on the water and sewer rate structures that they have in place, that most don't have a tiered structure with four tiers the way Holliston does. So I think there's a lot to understand as to what is the goal of having four tiers? What is the goal of having the cap or exemption that we have in place? I just, we didn't hear it last year, and I totally understand why. It was the start of the pandemic and we were, you know, limited in the amount of discussion we were able to have. That would be a discussion I would welcome having, and I agree with Ben that not doing it tonight is very smart, and revisiting this in six months or so in the middle of the summer is a better time. And I say summer for this reason, I'm not sure why Ben proposed it, I agree with him, but summer is when we start to see water restrictions in place. And I think summer is a time when we, as a community, are a bit more focused perhaps on the fact that this is in fact a limited resource. So I like for that reason, having this in the summer. I would say that if we have the ability to look at the tiered structure, we may also have the ability to look at the lower tiers. We know that in Holliston, we have small households with seniors who are only one or two people in the household. We know that that's at least a quarter of our population. So we have forty-eight hundred accounts for the study that we have here. And so about a quarter of those at least are going to be those smaller households. And does this tiered structure take that into account? In fact, we know that this is a community, our senior households, that often have economic difficulty hardships. And so is our tiered structure, we see through the, perhaps one could argue, that that cap on tier four for commercial industrial benefits, those businesses, those accounts, are we seeing the same sort of thing for the tier one? Those are questions. Definitely don't need to answer those tonight, but I would like to come back and revisit those. I would like to put forward that this may be a task that we put out to a committee to investigate. I see we have on the call here, we have Rich Rosenberg on the call. He is on the Sustainable Waste Committee, and I just wanted to pose, we can do this, talk about this now perhaps or under other business, but the possibility of looking at that committee and changing it to be a sustainability committee and giving them a task of addressing our water rate structure, recognizing that it's a limited natural resource, and approaching it from that angle. Again, I totally understand that the study and the purpose of tonight is to make sure we're recovering the full cost of our service, and I think we're accomplishing that. I would like to see another look at this, both from an equitability standpoint and also from a protection of our resource standpoint. So do you want to come back, or John, do you want to come back to that under other business perhaps at the end of the meeting and just get done with the water?
Yeah, I think that's probably appropriate.
Okay.
And I would just echo what Sean Reese said earlier, which is, as I look at this, and I think it is a good study, I think it provides us as a town, finance staff, DPW staff, the board, the ability to entertain scenarios that we think should be discussed for equitability or any other reasons, just, you know, sort of, if we think they're the best decisions- of, if, if we think they're the best decisions in terms of, um, doing anything with the tiers, we now have that ability, I think. But to do those analyses as we, that the analysis as is required or requested by that group or your, or this group or, or anything. So I, I think this is an excellent tool, and I think we can certainly answer those questions.
I agree. It's a great tool. I saw it last year when Sean and I went through the water rate study. Uh, just a couple of thoughts, and they kind of dovetailed with Ben and Tina both said. Um, in addition to reviewing the water rate study metrics and, and whether or not we have it right, um, I've, I've said all along that I, I, I really think the burden of asking every water rate user to pay a user rate fee every year to replace one mile of, uh, pipe, um, is regressive. And I'm hoping that once we get the study back, um, that shows what the plan can be for accelerating a program, we can put that through a bond, uh, request and relieve the rate uses of the burden of putting this, uh, fee out every single year to replace a mile. It was always sort of a misplaced fee, if you will, to accomplish a short-term goal. We should be thinking long-term. Uh, we should be thinking more along the lines of a, uh, capital override to afford the cost of replacing the water pipes and take it off as a fee. Uh, so that's part of what Ben is talking about. I think when we see these studies come back, uh, we can talk with, um, the, the planner and the, and the engineers about ways to achieve both, which would be water rate relief and long-term planning. So I think it dovetails nicely into the long-term view that hopefully sometime this summer we'll have a chance to look at.
Okay. So a couple of things. One, we did get a, a question in the chat, which we can get into when you're ready on that exact topic. Um, the point that I would make, uh, is, is simply, you know, those things have been adopted in towns, um, in a way to sort of, while we, while we continue to initiate ways in which people can reduce their use of water, we still have fixed costs to run a system. Those, those flat fees and those types of things for infrastructure have generally been used to capture the fact that even as people begin to use less conserve water, um, we have capital needs that we need to keep up with. If it's not the right mechanism, we certainly can look at other options.
I personally don't think it is.
Okay.
I just jumped in on that thought. So the assumptions here in the study, and maybe this is not the right time to make this comment, but the assumptions are that there's no change in the number of accounts over time, and they're looking till twenty-thirty. No change in the number of accounts, so no growth. And also that there's a percent decrease in usage. So they've calculated in a, a point five percent reduction. I didn't know if that was specific to Holliston or if that's just best practice when you're, you know, standard practice when we're doing these studies.
Water, water conservation is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's in this, that's wide. That's nationwide or worldwide. There's a, is certainly an awareness of conservation. So what's good about the studies, um, is they'll help us determine if we need even to investigate, you know, new sources or not. So it's kind of, all these studies are exciting for the water department. So it's going to point out those, anything where, uh, are shortcomings or different funding mechanisms, or, you know, if we need new sources of water, or, um, if we're fine with where, kind of where we're at. Um, but, but to your point that conservation has, um, kind of reset the water industry where it's not necessarily focused on constantly searching for new sources of water. It's kind of, um, tailoring your, your existing sources and kind of fine-tuning your, your revenue streams. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay.
All right. Uh, I want to stand any questions from folks on the Zoom for our water rate hearing this evening. Anybody have any comments?
We had Elizabeth Reece in the comments. Would you like to read the question, or I can read it, Elizabeth, if you'd like?
I have a question. Brian Moran, two-six-seven Norfolk Street.
Hi, Brian. What's on your mind?
Good, how are you? I was just wondering, uh, back to your comments about the surcharge. Uh, always, all we, we see is residents on our bill is a surcharge and no information about the progress of the water line replacement. And I'd like to know, how do we get access to a progress report? Uh, the last time I went to a hearing on the subject of water rates, I made a suggestion of having a, uh, an insert in the mail or to our bill just showing us where we're at. Haven't seen that yet either. I was wondering when, if ever, we'll get some information on the progress of the project.
Well, what we do is we do post these projects to the website. So we have periodic updates, uh, when the projects are underway. See, it's under the, basically in the water department tab.
Okay.
Uh, that's where we pro-, post the, uh, our, our current projects.
And I, I would also.
But certainly, we're always open to different, if you have, you know, if we, if we want to try a different channel or method, a way to reach people, certainly, um, we can put an insert in the, the next mail that goes out for billing. I have no problem with any of those suggestions.
Well, that's what I suggested in the last hearing, Sean, and I think you, you, you were on board with that, but it hasn't happened.
Well, it looks like I'm still on board. Yeah. So we'll make sure it happens the next billing period.
I mean, I'm, I'm computer literate. I can go on and, and, and look this up. But as, as was said earlier in the meeting, not everybody has access to a computer or even is computer literate for that information.
Sure.
Sean, uh, just one point maybe to, uh, sharpen Brian's remark. On the website, you have multiple project updates, but not all of them are associated with the infrastructure fee.
Okay.
So we, we may want to identify which projects are being funded by the water infrastructure fee versus other sources of funding.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, that was part of your question. What are we paying for, right?
Yes, exactly.
Sorry, Ben, you, you're going to, you're going to also weigh in. Go ahead.
Yeah, I know, and I, I think, I, I think an insert could certainly, we could certainly talk about the, the current projects and, um, you know, what the, what the future plans are. And I think what we can do is, to your point, we, we're, we're building a plan, uh, Brian, to, uh, to, to figure out what, what, what we want to do in the next few years. That's going to be, that was what I was referring to. Um, we had a, um, an article in December Town Meeting to, to further, uh, just, uh, develop the plan, um, to, uh, to, to John's point about, um, accelerating the, uh, the replacement. So one of the things that we can do is we'll start to, as we get that information, we can start to show you what we have done, and we can start building that, and then we can also talk about what we will do and give you both pieces, so you can understand to your, to your, to your question, what is that fee paying for? And what has it paid for and what will it pay for? And then, um, you know, one of, as I had suggested, I think we, you know, and we, we want to have a discussion about these fees and these tiers in the summer, and we want to, um, to, to John's point, to see about, uh, potential alternative funding models. So that way, there, you know, maybe there is a, a fee, maybe there isn't a fee, but we want to look at, explore other options. So we'll, we'll get that information for you, and we'll put it together for you, and then we'll have a further discussion about the, uh, the value and efficacy of continuing that particular program.
Works for me. Thank you very much.
Well, Travis? I would just say, so, um, for information on that fund, uh, previous to the December fifth Town Meeting, we've got to reschedule from October, the balance of the water infrastructure, the account was three million, uh, three-point-two-seven million dollars. It had been built up and not extended significantly for probably two fiscal years after that appropriation for the Winter Street project, at, uh, two-point-eight million dollars. The balance post-special Town Meeting was approximately four-hundred-sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, and so, you know, I think one of the things that we can do is sort of show, uh, the cash in and out of that, that fund, as, as Ben mentioned. I think another thing, you know, that, that we're working towards, and, uh, since I've been here, and, and my goal would be at least to sort of see a, a revised approach to it, is a five-year capital plan, which, you know, I think is, is more townwide needed also, but, uh, on a water enterprise, uh, I think would be, uh, a, a much-needed document for everybody to sort of see all the work that gets done under Sean's group. Um, but yeah, so that, that balance sort of ebbs and flows as those projects come in. The two-point-eight million was approved at the December Town Meeting.
Do we have somebody else who has a comment? Um...
What, I have one more additional comment regarding that. I'm sorry.
Hank, could you hang on a second, Sean? I think somebody's been in the queue, and I want to recognize them. Is this somebody who, uh, has asked a chat question we want to talk about, or can she not speak?
No, I can, I'm here. This is Elizabeth Reece, uh, three-ninety-six Chamberlain Street. Um, I'm just a new town member, so I didn't know the background on the water infrastructure fee. How many years is that projected for right now that we know that we'll keep that in the billing structure? Um, is that in the twenty, fiscal year twenty-two plan that was announced in that chart, it was taken into account all the way to fiscal year, uh, twenty-thirty?
Yes, it's, it's baked into the projections, and if you, until it's changed, Elizabeth, it'll be a perpetual fee.
Okay, awesome. Thanks for the clarification.
Is that all?
Yep, that was all. Thanks.
All right, Sean, back to you. You said you wanted to offer some clarification.
Just real quick, yeah. The infrastructure fee was never meant as a permanent solution. Um, it was always meant as a, as a method to start this, you know, these water main replacement projects. Uh, so certainly, um, any type of change, whether it's going to be some sort of bonded, uh, type of financing and a removal of the infrastructure fee, i- is certainly more than welcome, as long as there is some type of revenue so the town can continue to move forward with the water main replacements. And, uh, you know, when we initially put it on about five years ago, it, it seemed like the, basically the easiest way, uh, to get going at the time, rather than putting, uh, you know, through the taxes. But certainly, um, the changes is, you know, for lack of better, welcome, or, uh, we're open to doing that.
Thank you, Sean. Anything else, Travis? You good?
No, I think, uh, I think we can certainly come back, um, in, in a time to review that. I think that, that question on the use of that fee certainly speaks to some of the things that Ms. Heine mentioned, um, when it comes to equitability, you know, it hits every account rather than being spread out over usage, those types of things. We can revisit that if that's what the board wants to do in the summertime.
Very well. So the seating, um, I remember for the last couple of years, we've kept the water rate hearing open because there's been business to come. Uh, have we arrived at the point this evening where we should take a vote on the rate itself, Travis? Is that what you're intending?
Yes, I believe that we have, uh, a budget proposal that I sent out to you that incorporates the, uh, the water treatment plant project, including the change from the assumption of using SRF. Uh, I think that that budget, um, if, if we're going to go with the StanTech, uh, uh, recommendation of zero percent for FY twenty-two can be supported through the revenue that we'll be seeing, um, even if we were to return back to the, uh, pre-COVID with everyone home, um, sort of environment. Uh, so at this point, I think that the board could certainly, if you're willing to accept StanTech's recommendation, um, take action on the FY twenty-two water rate.
So I'll ask, uh, Ben, if you'd like to make a motion to that effect, if you have the details handy?
Um, I will make a motion, um, to, uh, with respect to the water rates, to keep the water rates at the same level there.
Zero percent.
Zero, uh, with a zero percent change to the water rates for FY twenty-two, zero percent change versus FY twenty-one. So...
Uh, so there's your rate. Did you want to take a separate vote on the budget, Travis?
Um, I can bring that up, and we can discuss that separately if you'd like.
Let's do that. Okay. So I have a motion on the rate hearing. Um, the rate, if you will, proposed rate for FY twenty-two. Do you have a second?
The second to the question, do you want to read out the tiers as they are, or just is, is what, zero percent from last year?
Read them out if you have the team.
All right, so I'll just read out with my second here, that tier one up to fifteen-hundred cubic feet will be five dollars and forty-three cents per one hundred cubic feet. Tier two, uh, fifteen-hundred-and-one to thirty-nine-hundred cubic feet will be eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Tier three, uh, thirty-nine-oh-one cubic feet up to forty-eight-hundred cubic feet will be seventeen-seventy-nine. And anything over forty-eight-hundred cubic feet will be charged at a rate of twenty-five dollars and six cents.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Let's move to the water budget, Travis.
Okay.
So, I will. Share my screen in here.
All right. Are we looking at a budget?
We are. All right, let me try to zoom.
Barely, actually. Oh, there we go.
It is a larger budget. This is the entire enterprise fund, obviously, so, um, we can, uh, I can try to scroll down so we can make it as big as possible. Um, Sean, do you want to sort of hit the highlights there?
So before we, did you want me, uh, give a brief update? You had mentioned about the water treatment plant and the timeline, or you want to save it until after the budget?
No, that'd be great. We can kick that off. It's down here, uh, and factored into FY twenty-two for debt. So why don't you, uh, update us on where we are?
Okay, so we will post, uh, a new update to the website. Um, so February third, the treatment plant will be published in the Central Register. That is the, uh, basically the, the weekly source of information about municipal contracts being awarded or about to go out to bid. Um, the advertising for bid will wait, will go until the twenty-fourth of February. We'll have the bid opening March tenth. Uh, from that point, we need to execute the contract documents, which is the bid-bond reference. We'll have the notice of award, the notice to proceed. Um, uh, we expect to do the, uh, the notice proceed in April. Uh, so that's when the calendar starts, so that's when construction should start, uh, sometime in April for the treatment plant. And that's assuming everything goes as planned, and hopefully it all does.
Sean, I think you had mentioned that the bid opening is going to be remote, right?
We're still trying to tweak that. Uh, we have the Winter Street opening, um, I think February tenth, so we're going to see how that goes. I, I think we do a portion of remote and, and I guess kind of play that, see what we can do in March. Yeah, there's a portion of it that is going to be, uh, some type of remote, uh, dial-in option.
Gotcha. Okay. Questions on the timeline for the water treatment plant? Ben, you good?
No, I'm good.
Tina?
No questions. Thanks, Sean.
Uh, Sean, really quickly, can you see that through where if all goes according to plan, you have an NTP, NTP in April of twenty-twenty-one? Uh, how long does the construction take, and when does treated water start flowing to residents?
Well, we're, yeah, we're still going to stick to our timeline, uh, of summer of twenty-two is when that's, we should have some treated water flowing. So hopefully it's on the earlier side, you know, June, July, some, sometime right there.
Okay. I passed along a message, I, just to clarify, a, a message from a resident who contacted me last week indicated that, um, for some reason or another, she'd heard that treated water will not be flowing to residents for two years after the treatment plant is up and running. Uh, can you clarify when the treated water will be moving through the pipes to, um, the users?
Well, yeah, I mean, I know what you kind of meant. So certainly, the plant is going to automatically, immediately as soon as it turn on, start pumping treated water. But we'll have to do some system flushing to remove the sediment that's built up in those water mains, because we're going to start pumping clean water, and we're going to have to, over time, remove the dirty water that's in there or the buildup that's in there. So that'll take some time. I don't anticipate it taking, uh, two years to provide clean water. When the treatment plant is on, it'll be an immediate notice, but we'll have some flushing to do, uh, to get all the sediment that's out of the water main. So I would expect residents to have certainly, um, a noticeable change right away. Um, so we'll have some mains cleaning to do, some scouring, uh, some pipe cleaning to get out the old buildup that's in there.
How long would that?
Uh, well, I mean, that could take a few weeks to, uh, you know, maybe a month or two to really kind of get that clean, get those water mains. So you got to remember for, for years and years and years, there's buildup over there. So it, you know, it'll take a little bit of time to clean those up. But residents are going to notice clean water right away. It's just going to, there's still buildup in the water mains. But so we'll, we'll have to coordinate when we run the plant. We'll have to do some coordinated flushing, so we'll have to deal with that, um, kind of, or come up with a plan as we get near completion.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay.
So do you want to, uh, hit the highlights here, Sean?
Yeah, okay. Um, so this, zero percent increases across the board with the exception of, uh, the water debt, which has been increased due to the new water treatment plant. If you look at the total, the personal services, um, it looks like we had an increase to the regular salaries. Unfortunately, what happened last year, um, was there was a, an employee who was unaccounted, his salary was uncounted for in FY twenty-one. Uh, so that is actually put back in for FY twenty-two. That employee's been employed here since two thousand nineteen, so we've added no employees. It was an oversight when the budget got approved last year that, uh, that salary was not accounted for. Okay, we, uh...
That's it here. Um, and then, so this is the subtotal of personal services here, ends up at ten percent. Because of that, obviously, any changes that, that happen right now, we're carrying a zero percent assumption, which we'll revisit at the end of February, March timeline. And, and also right here on the, is the second part of your personal services here, and you get this directly from Mary Boskett, Sean, right?
Yeah, so we, obviously, every year, we have an, we have an increase in personal services for the employees. But we did, I did add in the temporary labor of five thousand back into this year's FY22. We removed it last year. If we put that back in, allow us to do some summer hires and get some just additional, additional work done throughout the summer months. If we, if you approve the, the temporary labor line being increased again. We had increased the longevity, to slight increase the longevity as well.
And then, so then these come from Mary Boskett, based on our accumulators and their, their use of these types of benefits. And then, as Sean mentioned, the purchase services, supplies, materials, intergovernmental and professional development are flat from year over year, including hydrant capillule. And then, as we discussed previously, included now in the FY22, and here is ban interest assumption that Mary Boskett and Sean and I discussed, which would be an assumption that if we're going to move as quickly on the timeline as possible, that, you know, as we go through the cash flow of, of construction, that we would ban, which is a bond anticipation note for the amount of the project, that you pay short-term interest on that over the year. And then, as you get towards ninety percent completion of a project, you then long-term borrow for that. You receive the bond, you pay off the ban, and then you have the long-term debt that you scheduled. So this is a budgeted amount rather than a scheduled amount. But it is the standard way that municipalities approach these types of things, is that we ban until we get to a, a completion date, in which case we'll, we'll issue the long-term borrowing. There are those instances where you sort of jump the gun. You don't do the ban because you want to lock in rates. I think we are uncomfortable saying that. I don't think that that's a risk for us at the moment, for the foreseeable future, and that, you know, we're, we're going to be okay if we, if we do this. The, the benefit to doing the ban and then the long-term borrowing, as I said, a couple of examples, you know, sometimes things change and you need to be prepared, and the ban gives you just the most flexibility to sort of deal with those things. So this is, this includes that, and it, and it keeps us on that timeline. So the bottom-line budget, I just broke this out a little bit so you can see. So the, the five percent water budget change includes all of the changes that Sean had discussed up here with the individual who had been missing. The changes that come from Mary Boskett, all the zeros across the operating comes to that five point seven five percent increase. Then when you layer in the debt, the total increase is, is ten point two four. Again, this is supported through the rate that you just approved.
Any questions on the Water Department of Public Works budget?
I have just, just one question. Um, the, uh, the regular salary, so the, the fifty-eight thousand that we missed in FY21, are we going to need to do any, any activity at town meeting to make that up to be whole in FY21?
No, we should be able to, to work within, within the families, some line item transfers to make up for that.
Okay. Any questions, Tina?
No, I, well, yeah, I do, I had that same question, Ben, okay. Uh, and then I just had, I caught five-one-seven-nine-zero, the OPEB line. Are we going to expect to see that kind of an increase, that's a twenty-five percent increase in each budget? I mean, I would imagine that doesn't hit the Water Department uniquely, so.
Uh, no, in that this is based on Mary's accumulator analysis. So you can see, like, for example, the nineteen-nine-eighty-eight is actually less than the expanded amount in, in twenty. It dropped in twenty-one based on the use of, or enrollment in, in plans that, that this group had. And based on the, the most recent analysis, it goes back up. But this is not, the, the fifteen thousand to nineteen thousand is not a twenty-five percent increase that we're going to see across all. This is based on usage.
Okay, all right. And then last question here, and I, just really to clarify what you had said just a minute ago, Travis. So looking down here in the fifty-nine hundred, the debt service.
Yes.
It's going to switch. Once we, once we're ninety percent completion of construction, we're going to see that interest now shift up to the principal. We'll see the principal amount go up, and the interest will come down.
The FY23 amount will have the principal.
Much higher.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, all right. No other questions?
And again, in this, in this analysis by StanTech, what they did was update based on what we now project to be this debt. Once that's locked in, we can update, you know, with an actual schedule, but right now we're just budgeting.
Okay.
All right, so a couple of questions, Travis. We are within the hearing now. We are reviewing the Department of Public Works water budget. Do you want to close the hearing and take a vote on the water budget? Or?
If you're comfortable with the, the rate as you are, have discussed it, which will.
Let's do that.
Which will match revenues that are exceed this budget, then I would be comfortable with that, yeah?
All right. Well, I'll take a motion to close the water rate hearing relative to the FY22 budget review.
Some would.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye. So it closes at seven forty-six. Now we'll move on to the question of the Department of Public Works water budget as proposed by Ms. Rehern. I think we've had our questions asked. I'll entertain a motion to approve the FY22 budget, which I believe is, if I have that correct, two-five-one-three-seven-twenty-one? It is, correct. Yes, that's correct. So I will move, make that motion. Thank you.
And I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Any other work with regard to public work budgets that you would like us to address this evening?
Anything you got, Sean?
No, I just, before we exit, hopefully, I just wanted to thank Ben and Travis for the preparation, the time, putting both the water rate analysis together and the budget. And what a privilege it is to, to work with Travis. He's incredibly financially sharp. So it's an amazing transition.
Good to know. I don't know if you're aware of this. We'll be doing his evaluation in a few minutes.
He told me that.
Thanks, Sean.
All right, thank you, Sean. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Let us move on to comments from the town administrator.
Okay, so the one thing I wanted to mention, obviously, we started to prepare the FY22 budget. One thing that I've made, finance committee members that are involved as liaisons on these particular budgets aware, and that I, I think I've made you aware of as well, is that we're looking at some structural changes to the way that the budget exists with, specifically related to, the catalyst being the facilities management budget that sort of did not exist as of two years ago and has been in the infancy stages so far. One of the things that we're looking at to sort of make structural changes that will impact that is going to be using the public buildings budget, which is an interestingly named budget line that incorporates quite a few things. So I've discussed sort of the idea of breaking up that budget. It includes such things as the cost of our munis, accounting and, and HR platform. It incorporates, you know, some, some things that are heavily IT-related. So I sat down with the IT director and the facilities manager and the town accountant and discussed whether or not breaking up the public buildings quote-unquote budget into IT and facilities management, and then there's one line that is, would only really be appropriate to move to the select board. So because of some structural changes and the fact that the select board budget is not actually reviewed by the finance committee until February twenty-third, at this point, I would like to move the discussion of your budget until our February fourth meeting, at which point we will also have the public buildings, facilities management, wastewater treatment plant budgets. And let me just pull up here so you can see what I'm looking at. Of course, I just hopped out of the Zoom. No, I'm in the Zoom. Chris, why am I doing? I told Chris I was going to, I was going to do it myself.
Oh.
And, uh, there we go. All right, so this is the combined schedule. It's been updated with only one tweak. And let me zoom in again, because of course it's tiny. So we did all of these. Last time, these have been forwarded to the finance committee. Uh, we just did the water rate hearing and water budget overview. The finance committee tomorrow night will meet on some budgets that you've already looked at, including the reserve fund and their own budget. So on Monday, February first, we'll have Sharon Emmerich, Mary Boskett, Mark Caffeline, and Karen Sherman. Yes, and so then my, my proposal would be that we move a discussion of your budget down here, where we have public buildings and facilities management. And it'll just be a, sort of, a better overview for you to see all the changes that I've, I've been discussing with staff that I think will really make it more readable and be, be good changes structurally that we want to see. So at this time, I don't have anything else on that, although I could certainly entertain any questions on that.
Any questions on that?
Not at this time.
You good?
No.
All right.
All right, so then the only other comments that I have, I think we covered quite a few things. Last meeting was my update, and there were a couple of questions that came up at the end that I am still tracking down, so I'll bring those back to you next week. At which point, we will be meeting again, starting at seven rather than six-thirty. For, and, and we will no longer have our nine-thirty cap at the end of the night as related to the governor's orders.
You all set?
Yes.
All right, great. Moving on. Performance evaluation of the town administrator. Citizens should know that contracts with the town administrator includes the following language, that it is understood during the term of this agreement, which, by the way, was signed on July second, 2020, the board shall annually, in the month of January, review and evaluate the performance of the town administrator relative to the goals, relative to the goals and objectives established by and between the board and the town administrator. The, the board, about a year ago, undertook the effort to create an administrative, excuse me, an evaluation tool. The prior town administrator was evaluated by several members of the board, I believe, at the time. But the town administrator, shortly thereafter, announced his retirement, and I don't believe there was much done with respect to the public process of his evaluation. This year, we reached out to town council to identify the proper procedure for revealing information relative to this process. And I'll read that briefly. It includes several steps. We were to approve and create an evaluation worksheet and criteria. Each member would complete the worksheet, the evaluation worksheet. Each member would submit the individual evaluation worksheet to the town administrator. And each member would meet with the town administrator. The members modify the individual evaluation to the extent the member deems appropriate. And then each member submits the final individual evaluations to the town administrator. Changes have been made. Each select board member then submits final individual evaluations to a third party. In this case, we've elected to make that the town clerk. The town clerk then compiles a summation of the evaluation comments and grades and submits a summary report back to the board and the town administrator. That occurred today. A public meeting will be held, at which time the compiled, that compiled evaluation is discussed publicly. And this evening, I wish to inform folks that we have the consolidated review of the town administrator. I'll go, I'll go through this efficiently, and if there's any comments from my colleagues, please update or add them. Folks should understand that the evaluation tool includes eighteen chara, excuse me, criteria that are drawn from the Special Acts of nineteen ninety-four, chapter ninety-four, which created the positions to her occupy. These duties, which I will not name completely in, in their thorough extent, because they are voluminous, cover a wide range of characteristics expected of the town administrator, including leadership, professionalism, knowledge, skill, communications, initiative, motivation, attention to detail, quality of work, and so forth. After reviewing the compiled comments provided by the town clerk, I'm pleased to inform folks that Mr. Hearn widely reaches, exceeds expectations by many, by most of the consensus of the board members. Each duty includes characteristics that shall either exceed, meet improvement needed, or unacceptable. Our, excuse me, job duty number one, two select board members exceeded, rated as exceeded, one met. This theme carried forward through all the remaining duties, which I don't think too many are exceptions. I wanted to just arrive at the overall evaluation and read that, and then we'll mix up some comments. So these are select board comments relative to Mr. Hearn's performance since he was brought on July twentieth of 2020, so roughly six months in. Travis is great to work with. He's taken on an enormous task to run a town in the middle of a pandemic. The challenges he has faced are great, but he has been able quickly and succinctly to create recommendations and get things done. There are a lot of responsibilities for the town administrator. He's pulled a lot together. A few challenges to evaluate him are that he has become a point of contact with departments, so it's difficult to see how he's been able to interact with each department. Comments from subordinates have been positive. Travis's output has been what we would want to see. Additionally, this evaluation is being made at the start of a budget season, so we do not have much to go on for the overall process at the time. Travis puts in long hours and evenings and on weekends. I hope he has the resources he needs to be successful. I'm willing to work with him to get whatever he requires to be able to discharge his duties and delegate as necessary. He has excellent attention to detail, with timely and comprehensive updates when needed, via text, email, phone, to ensure the town runs smoothly. He's become part of a team and a go-between for town employees so the board can deliver information through him or correspondingly receive information as needed. The next select board member mentions. Met with Mr. Hearn on Friday afternoon, January eighth, to conduct performance evaluation upon, was most impressed with his financial skills. Through discussion with two of his previous employers and feedback from the town administrative screening committee, this skill surfaced as his strongest. I was not fully aware of his preparedness for the remaining components of the role, including negotiations, leadership, communication. Without hesitation, I can confirm we hired the right person. He's exceeded my expectation in virtually all facets of this job. Mr. Hearn has made an immediate and demonstrable improvement in the way the select board conducts its business. His communication skills, oral and written, are very strong. His organization skills are excellent. His leadership with department heads and coordination of efforts with other boards and committees has proven invaluable as the select board and the town proceed forward. Finally, his preparation and execution of budgeted information and content for the special town meeting held in December 2020 was excellent, garnering similar remarks from other stakeholders. Travis is a pleasure to work with. It is a pleasure to work with such a talented and committed town administrator. I'm going to get cut off here. There was more comments from one more. Uh, I'll steal your screen if I could. My, just did not, thank you. Travis has been a fantastic addition to the town of Holliston. This is the last comment by a select board member. By all accounts, his arrival has been welcomed by town employees and residents, and his work has been recognized and appreciated at a very high level. Over the next year, over the next year, his continued efforts in the area of financial management, general administration, and communication, both with the public and among town departments, will bring real and meaningful change to residents of Holliston. The select board has made it a priority to support Travis in his role as town administrator as he transitions into and accepts the tremendous demands of this position. He is clearly working hard to meet the demands, and it is in this area that I offer a recommendation. I continue to encourage Travis to explore ways in which staffing can increase or change to allow the town administrator's office to run efficiently and with a healthy work-life balance. There has been a near constant call from our community to address complicated and longstanding traffic issues and improve sidewalk, crosswalk infrastructures. The ability to focus on these issues and make progress is a priority for my time on the, on the board. It is important for me that Travis has the resources to be able to do so while attending to his other critical job duties. Overall, two exceeds expectations, one meets expectations. Comments from my colleagues on the select board, starting with you, Mrs. Sparrow. Any?
Um, I just want to say, like, I don't have a lot of, uh, experience working with other town administrators, but it is a pleasure working with you, Travis. I think you're, you're, you get to the point, you make, you make your, and you give the details and the information that's necessary to the particular conversation we're having, and you're able to keep many plates spinning at the same time. So I appreciate the effort that you put in, and the attention to detail is welcome and very important to me particularly. I, I'm a data guy, so I like seeing numbers and things like that. So I like being able to. So I like being able to understand, sort of, under the hood, how some of these things are functioning and such. So I really appreciate the work that you put in, and it's great to work with you. It's been, we've definitely noticed a lot of movement in a lot of different areas, and taking some very complex issues and boiling them down to their essence and understanding what our role is and what kinds of things we need to do. And I particularly appreciate the moments that you get creative and thinking outside the box sometimes with some of the solutions, and some of your experience in other places and things like that. It's been very beneficial to see how you've been able to take something that seemingly wasn't going to work, and you managed to quickly pivot and change things. So I appreciate it, and I think it's a pleasure working with you, and I'm excited to work with you for the next couple of years as well as my chance continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Anything to you?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't think you can appreciate coming in as a new board member to the executive board, and nine months into that, being hit with a pandemic. That has been my reality. And I think that, you know, my comments, I shared them with you when we met to review your performance evaluation, they're nothing but glowing. But I would share this personally with you, that having you on board for six-plus months now, just six months, I should say, has lifted a load, a burden, a sense of responsibility, and placed it away from the pandemic and on to the good work that this board is intended to do. And I'm so grateful for that, I really am. I share Ben's comments, your creativity is fantastic. The way you see a brick wall and go around it is something that I appreciate. I am not the most patient of people, and I find that you are nothing but patient with me, and I appreciate that. And I would say that anywhere that there was a meet expectations, it was simply needs more than six months. I think you're doing a fantastic job.
Travis, I think you had all the good news, not the bad news.
(laughing)
Oof.
You're supposed to have the compliment and then the bad news, and then the compliment. Just sandwich them.
None here, none here.
I think John is the sandwich.
Yeah, not here.
(laughing)
Travis, great job so far, and I think the comments I read capture all the elements of, in detail, of what the board has experienced over six months. I remember when the search firm went out, you know, their work, one of the comments from the head of the organization said, "You're going to be amazed at how things change when you hire the right person." And, boy, was he right. I mean, it's night and day, the skill sets you brought, you bring to the job, all of the complimentary items, excuse me, that we've read regarding your communication and so forth have really been on full display. I still think we've got, we haven't seen the best of you. I think you have a lot of upside, a lot of room to grow with us. We look forward to years of your service. One thing I would like to end on is echoing the remark made by one of the select board members, which is resources. I think one of the things I recognize is that, you know, somebody once said, "The more you do, the more you do." You consume everything that comes your way, but I think we have to recognize that's not healthy. There is an insatiable demand for work in the select board's office, and eventually, something's got to give. So this board has to seriously look inward at finding resources for you and for the town to provide better services and better outcomes for their benefit. So I think that's a commitment you'll have from us going forward, so that it doesn't all fall on your shoulders and we burn you out. I'd like to avoid that going forward. Do you have any remarks you'd like to make regarding your performance evaluation at this time?
No, I appreciate the comments of all the board members and listening down and working with you over the past six months. It's hard to believe it's only been six months, but it's, you know, I think from last week's sort of update, you know, I think there's still a lot of things to move forward, and I'm excited for that. And so, you know, while it seems like it, you know, it's been a short period of time, you know, I think a lot of the things that we talk about are long-term solutions, and I look forward to working on those things with you.
All right, thank you, Travis. Well, that will conclude our annual evaluation of the town administrator pursuant to his contract. The document is public, and it will be available. The individual select board evaluations will go in your personnel file. So that is, that will conclude that portion of our agenda. Now on to board business, chapter ninety, project reimbursement, Westfield Drive culvert.
Yes, so this is, obviously, at the town meeting, we approved chapter ninety funding on an annual basis by statute. This is sort of your role as highway surveyors, to review this and sign off. And I am comfortable with this, but I can answer any questions as you may have.
I believe Mr. Sparrow is looking at the document right now?
I am indeed.
Does this require a vote, Travis?
We're looking for a vote and a signature, yeah. So the amount is for twenty-seven thousand two twenty-seven fifty. And then we will sign, you would sign the necessary documents, and then I would submit it back to the...
So when you're ready back, if you'd like to make a motion for that?
So I will make a motion to approve this project reimbursement request form for chapter ninety and final report for the Westfield Drive culvert replacement. And the total amount of this request is twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
I have a motion of a second.
I'll second that with a question. So the total amount expended is thirty, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-five. This is not our first chapter ninety reimbursement for the Westfield Drive culvert, so I'm not sure if this is the last one, or we would have checked to another one, but it's really a question, it doesn't hold up my second as a motion.
I don't believe this closes it out. I mean, there's still a check.
What's this?
No, it is the final project, yeah. I think it does, this particular item out.
Oh, I'm sorry, there it is, right, okay.
The, you know, we put together a list of chapter ninety projects, and so this is just one of the, and, yeah, as it indicates, this is the last one.
All right, we have a motion and a second on that item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that carries. Thank you very much. Last item on our agenda this evening is other business. Anything for you, Mr. Sparrow?
I do not have any other business.
Sorry.
Yes, so let me come back to my comment earlier about the Sustainable Waste Committee, and open up, hopefully, for a little bit of discussion, the possibility of changing the charge of that committee to expand to become a sustainability committee. We have, I believe, Rich Rosenberg is still on the call. Rich and I spoke this weekend. He had, prior to our conversation, already drafted, actually, it looks like a couple of months ago, a draft charge for a sustainability committee. Other communities who have a sustainability coordinator have a sustainability committee. It meshes with the Sustainable Waste Committee, which is what draws you to say, "Well, why not just change that committee?" It meshes with that because, you know, you're talking about recycling, you're talking about reducing your tonnage of waste and all that falls under sustainability as well. So that's why we're kind of linking the two here, but I'm interested to hear what John and Ben have to say about changing the charge, well, first of all, even having a sustainability committee, do you see a value in that? Do you see a value in the role that they could play in something like the kinds of questions that came up with future water rate discussions? Also, supporting the sustainability coordinator? Do you see, do you have an interest in that? And if so, would you want to see the Sustainable Waste Committee changed and morph into a sustainability committee? And take on all the things that they were doing already with the Sustainable Waste Committee, and then bring it under this new committee? So a couple of questions there. There's not much activity going on right now in their world in terms of sustainable waste and recycling, right? We're in the middle of a contract, no significant changes. There is some composting and textile recycling that's been going on. But I don't believe, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe they've met since May of twenty-twenty. So they're not a very active committee in that regard.
Ben, any comments?
Yeah, I think it's interesting. I'd like to see what Rich has, if he's got some language. I'd like to be able to have a chance to review it. I think it's an interesting idea. I would like to, I'd love to see more activity on the sustainability front. You know, Matt has been doing a great job, and he's been doing a ton of great things, but I'm interested to see if maybe there's some more ideas out there from some residents and things like that, that can kind of, you know, show some of the things that are salient to some of the people in the community. So I'm interested to see what Rich has put together, so I'm definitely open to the idea.
Okay.
We would want it to be a future agenda item to sort of discuss and have listed on our agenda, if we can do that.
Yes.
So Tina, I would agree, it's an interesting concept to merge the two. One sounds latent, one sounds promising. Bring them together, make better use of their time. I think any such charge should include the sustainability coordinator, to make sure he's privy to the actions of the committee, and he can report back to us. So I have no objection, if you want to put forward some type of charge, bring it up at the future meeting.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Anything else? Do you have a comment? No, I'm going to, you can.
No, I'm off that thing.
Okay, I just had two quick items. Holliston Police would like to alert folks that last night, there was a multiple break-ins in a neighborhood relative to motor vehicles. Holliston Police would like to remind all residents to lock your vehicles at night. There's every reason to do so. Don't find yourself on the wrong end of that thing in the morning. The last item is kind of a personal item. Last week, Holliston, if you believe in angels, lost one. Maria Schmidt passed away. I knew Maria socially. I never received a stronger hug from a human being in my life. Maria was full of life in every single way. Her family grieves her loss, as we do. She was taken from us much too soon. So on behalf of the board, please accept our condolences on Maria's passing. Any comments from people assembled on the Zoom call this evening? Other business. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some would.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Holliston, have a pleasant evening. We will see you next Monday night. Good night.